Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers then will be Speaker number 25, Scott Babbage, followed by Speaker 26, Cassie Cresswell, and then Speaker 27, Wendy Catton, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Babbage. I'm a member of the LSE at Canty Elementary. We are here to ask for consideration of an addition as well as other upgrades for our school. We are 150% overcrowded. Our classrooms have 27 to 35 kids with a minimum of three classrooms per grade. We are fine in performing arts magnet cluster school, but music and drama are taught out of a mobile cart because we do not have room for teachers and their equipment. We have 811 students in a school that was built for approximately 500. Our teachers do not have place to collaborate. Storage space and administration offices have been converted into classrooms to accommodate the students. Our classrooms have no room for the students but to sit at their assigned seats. We do not have a lunchroom or proper kitchen. The first floor hallway is utilized with picnic coolers and tables to serve hot lunch. Our students sit in auditorium chairs with small laptop tables and eat their lunches. This year, we have become so overcrowded that the children sit in folding chairs in the back of the auditorium with their lunches on their laps. Excuse me. Recession for the student is spent sitting in the same auditorium quietly during inclement weather due to the lack of anywhere else for them to go. On days when the weather is cold, good, children go outside and are left in playground equipment that is old, outdated, and dangerous. Accidents happen daily due to the quality of this equipment. We believe it's Canty's turn to be considered for an addition as well as these improvements for which we have been asking for since October 27, 1998.
Mr. Babbage, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Please be sure to read over the materials we have left for you. I have two points I want to make. 811 kids in a 500-capacity school is terrible. We've been added since 1998. We need your help. Please, we need your help. I'm not above begging here. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babbage. Did you leave materials with us? We have--
Yes, I did. We put them at the front desk. We checked in.
Susan, you want to make sure you find that material for us, please? We'll make sure we get it.
Thank you.
We haven't got any.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next speaker then, please. Speaker 26, Cassie Cresswell.
Hi, I'm speaking today on behalf of More Than a Score. We have serious concerns about a new program called the Illinois Shared Learning Environment, or IEL. IEL is being overseen by the Illinois State Board of Education. It's scheduled to be rolled out across Illinois, including here in CPS, starting this coming January. At its core, IEL will contain a statewide longitudinal database designed to contain more than 400 different types of personal information about students and teachers. Its database system is owned by a company called InBloom, and this software was built by Amplify, an educational testing and technology company owned by Rupert Murdoch. Data in InBloom will be stored on the Amazon cloud. InBloom has explicitly declared that it cannot guarantee the security and privacy of the data held in its databases and that it will not be liable for breaches of security. Illinois is only one of three states still participating in InBloom. Six other states have pulled out of this program over the last year because of their concerns about the confidentiality of private student data. I'm here to say that More Than a Score is strongly opposed to the sharing of confidential data about students and teachers with third parties without explicit permission of parents or teachers, especially for commercial purposes. We are very concerned about the potential for data breaches or unintentional or intentional misuse of the extensive private information about children, families, and school employees that would be stored in IEL. The longitudinal and statewide properties of the database mean that the information contained in IEL will potentially follow students and employees for decades. Two weeks ago, More Than a Score sent letters with questions about IEL and InBloom to CEO Barbara Bird Bennett and ISBE Superintendent Chris Koch, co-signed by eight organizations, including the American Civil Liberties Union of Illinois. We have not yet received a reply, and so we're here today presenting copies of our letters to you today. ISBE has stated previously that it is up to individual districts to decide whether to participate in IEL/InBloom. We would appreciate a timely response to the questions posed about the plan CPS has for participating. We urge the board to reconsider CPS participation in InBloom altogether. Parents need to have full control and knowledge of what data is being collected about their children and who it is being shared with. Thanks.
Thank you. As our next speaker approaches, the next group of individual speakers will be Speaker 28, please. Jenny Pinedo, followed by Speaker number 30, Nancy Diaz, and then Speaker 31, Antonia Villafranco, please.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Wendy Catton. I'm with the parent group Raise Your Hand. I actually signed up for once to talk about a policy that I was told was going to be on the agenda, but I see that it's not now. But I'll still make my comments. I went to a policy briefing on a new PE policy that I'm not sure if there are some changes underway, but I guess PE is going to be required, daily PE, for elementary schools and high schools. And at the briefing, we were told elementary schools would have three years to implement it, and high schools would move to this next year. I sent out an email blast to our list, and many principals wrote me back who were very concerned, of course, about the funding situation that we have. Again, I don't know if this is going to change since it's not on the agenda, but our group firmly supports increased PE, but given that neighborhood school budgets were decreased by 14% across the city, we're just asking that you, if this hasn't changed, that you give high schools the three years that you're giving elementary schools to implement this because our schools have been really weakened by budget cuts this year, and there's nowhere left to cut. We were told in the briefing by CPS that this would be budget-neutral. You can't mandate daily PE and say that it's budget-neutral. That's just not realistic. If I have 20 seconds left, I need to find out what's happening with the volunteer situation. We have many schools that are telling parents they need to be fingerprinted downtown at Elizabeth Street in order to volunteer in a classroom. This is kind of-- there's a bit of a tension with Pillar Three. If you really want parents in the classroom volunteering, you don't send them to be fingerprinted downtown. There's a policy in place that says parents will have a background check, and if they fail that, then there's a fingerprinting process. I've tried to get some answers through the face person. I haven't gotten any answers, so that's why I'm here. Now, that's something that's not on the agenda, but if you're talking about limiting public comments to just what's on the agenda, I hope that you talk to some stakeholders on how you can improve this whole process because there's a lot that goes on that's not going to be on your agenda. And we would request that maybe you come out to communities in the evening every three or four months to talk to parents. There's a lot going on, and that you send your agenda. I'll wrap up.
Thank you, Ms. Catton.
You can send it in those email blasts to parents so that they actually know what's happening in the district. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 28, Jenny Pinedo. Moving on to Speaker 30, Nancy Diaz. Last call for Antonia Villafranco. Moving on to Speaker 42, Maricela Salazar, and then Speaker 43, followed by Speaker 36, Raquel Macias.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maricela Salazar. Soy la presidenta del Consilio de la Escuela Belmont Craigin y el Centro Preescolar. Estoy aquí hoy en representación de la escuela preescolar y la comunidad de la Belmont Craigin para pedir respetuosamente a la Junta de Educación nos extenda el contrato de arrendamiento y nos permita la independencia del centro preescolar.
My name is Maricela Salazar. I am the chairperson of the LSE at Belmont Craigin, the school and the early childhood center. I'm representing the parents and the community, asking the support of the board to assure the renewal of the lease of the early childhood center and the support to make that center an independent school, no longer a branch like us.
Anualmente nuestra escuelita recibe 340 alumnos, mismos que generan 358 dólares por niño de fondos. Dichos fondos son depositados en la escuela elemental que se encuentra ubicada a dos millas de distancia, por lo cual dependemos directamente de la directora y su administradora de negocios para recibir los fondos necesarios para nuestro funcionamiento.
Every school, every year, our school receives between-- around 340 students, which generate 358 dollars each in funds, funds that are allocated directly to the elementary building two miles away from the early childhood centers, depending on the discretion of the principal and the business manager to fund our projects.
Este año escolar recibimos la cantidad de 29 mil dólares para cubrir en su totalidad los gastos del centro, comparado con 75 mil dólares que recibíamos años anteriores. Adicionalmente, las posiciones otorgadas por CPS, en el edificio principal se contrataron seis maestros de requecimiento, un segundo guardia de seguridad, ayudante de oficina, una administradora de negocios, y un subdirector de día completo.
This school year, we received 29,000 dollars for a total cost of 75,000 that used to be the money we receive in the past years. This money allows us to contract six resource teachers, a second security guard, a second office assistant, a business manager, and an assistant principal.
Ms. Salazar--
The elementary school allow to hire with that money.
Ms. Salazar, excuse me, can you please conclude?
En la escuelita no contamos siquiera con el personal de oficina que cubra el horario de 3:00 a.m. a.m. Hoy pedimos a CPS que revise nuestra petición de independencia, que tenemos bases y antecedentes de otros centros preescolares que trabajan y funcionan de manera independiente. CPS toma decisiones siempre pensando en el bienestar de nuestros niños. Brindarle a nuestra comunidad de Belmont Craigin un centro de educación preescolar permanente sería sin duda una de sus más acertadas decisiones. Thank you so much.
Without the money, we can't allow to hire office staff to cover the session between 3:00 a.m. and 5:30 p.m. every day. So, we are looking for you to study our petition for independence. We know that there already exist our preschool centers and CPS with that kind of independence. And also, we know that CPS always is making decisions thinking in the well-being of the students. So, given the Belmont Craigin community, its very own early childhood center would be, without doubt, one of the most important decisions you can have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Hertha Ramirez, followed by Speaker 36, Raquel Macias. And then after that, we'll have the designated speakers from the Catalyst Schools, which will be Speaker number 37, Gordon Hannan, followed by Speaker 40, Elizabeth Jamison Dunn, 51, Linda Capers, and 60, Colleen Reardon.
Good morning. My name is Hertha Ramirez, and I am a teacher at the Belmont Craigin Early Childhood Center. I am here with a group of parents, staff, and community to ask for your support to make the Belmont Craigin Early Childhood Center a standalone school. Over 10 years, we have struggled to maintain the quality and the integrity of our program under the leadership of three different schools and principals. Our school deserves to be independent. Since 2003, the center has fulfilled the mission of providing high-quality early childhood education to more than 3,800 students. We have a high-qualified, award-winning staff that has embraced parents as true partners in education. The center has been recognized, and is the only CPS center accredited by NACE, a mark of high-quality education. Currently, we are a branch of the Belmont Craigin School, which has been moved two miles away. From our experience, we know that the distance will make it difficult for our administration to supervise our school. The disconnection is so severe that we literally lack direct communication with our administration, except via email. Most of our contact for a variety of issues have been with the business manager, and this has caused many concerns. Who will conduct observation for teacher evaluation? Last year, the teachers required to be observed only once. This caused them to receive a message from the RLS evaluation system as lack of sufficient data to be rated. The previous year, ESPs received evaluation on the last day of school, and teachers did not receive a copy of their evaluation. The principal does not know us or has the time to get to know us. In order to fulfill our Chicago Ready to Learn proposal, we request that the board funds a principal position devoted solely to our center.
Ms. Ramirez, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Thank you. We are not proposing something new to CPS. This model of early childhood center already exists in the Velma Thomas Center and the Barbara Biggs Center, each of them with less enrollment than our school. The cost to CPS is minimal, and it will maximize the potential of our center to fulfill the public education right of our students. We would like to know what are the steps to become independent and who can we contact to initiate this process. We want to thank you for your attention to this issue, and we hope to hear from you soon. Thank you, the staff from the Belmont Craigin community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Somebody will get back to you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Raquel Macias, Speaker 36.
Mrs. Macias is going to speak Spanish, but she's bringing her own help here.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Raquel Macias. Vengo de la Hanson Park Elementary School. Soy voluntaria de esta escuela, y tengo dos niñas en esta escuela. Soy también líder de Kuque, Comunidades Unidas por la Calidad de la Educación.
My name is Juan Cruz. I'm going to be translating for her. Her name is Raquel Macias. She's a parent. She has two children at Hanson Park Elementary, and she's also a leader at Kuque, Communities United for Quality Education.
Ayer, padres y líderes de Kuque tuvimos una conferencia de prensa con el fin de presentar un reporte que investiga el plan de la CPS para abrir más escuelas charter anunciado el 12 de agosto. Y nuestro reporte tiene tres puntos principales.
So, yesterday, we were here. We held a press conference outside of the Board of Education building to release a report that took a second look at the RFP proposal for charter expansion plan released on August 12. And the report has three main points. And we have copies of the report for the board members here.
Okay. El primer punto es que la CPS infló los números de estudiantes en algunas comunidades para justificar abrir nuevas escuelas charter. Segundo punto, este plan será costoso para todos los contribuyentes e impuestos de toda la ciudad y afectará los presupuestos de las escuelas públicas en un futuro. Nosotros proponemos soluciones. Agregar salones a las escuelas que están sobrepobladas, como es el caso de mi escuela, que es la Hanson Park. Esta escuela necesitaría aulas adicionales, pero lo que esta escuela necesita tal vez no lo necesite otra escuela. Cada caso es un caso en particular. Cada escuela tiene sus necesidades propias.
Ms. Macias, excuse me, can you please conclude?
So, the report has three main points, three key findings. One is that CPS overstated the student numbers in some neighborhoods by inflating some of the numbers. The second point is that the RFP proposal for charter expansion is going to be costly. It's going to cost millions of dollars to taxpayers from the city, and it's going to affect future funding for public neighborhood schools. And lastly, it also has recommendations. One is that for schools that are overcrowded, provide modular units or extensions. But, she also said, but also, you should also look at each individual school because what would work for one school, it might not work for others.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Solamente nuestra conclusión es incitar a la CPS a realizar un estudio individual para evaluar las necesidades de cada escuela, porque lo que sería bueno para algunas escuelas no sería la solución para otras. Gracias.
Gracias. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 37, Gordon Hannan.
Good afternoon. My name is Gordon Hannan, and this is Ed Siderwitz and David Baldwin. We're the leadership team from the Catalyst Charter Schools. We are here today because we were notified by CPS leadership that two of our schools will be placed on a charter warning list and enter the revocation process, which we understand is on your agenda this afternoon. We understand why and are not here to argue that our ISAT scores need to improve. They do. We know it. We invested over 300,000 private dollars into it. Rather, the three of us are here who have over 100 years working in Chicago's most impoverished neighborhoods of Austin, North Lawndale, Back of the Yards, and Englewood. We would like to offer you another perspective on a critical component of school success and invite you simply to think about it. In the neighborhoods we serve, according to the 2010 U.S. Census, less than half of CPS students graduate from high school. In fact, one neighborhood, Austin, has a 47% high school graduation rate. Any other, North Lawndale, has a 39% high school graduation rate. The entire city has a 63% graduation rate. In these same two communities, Catalyst Elementary Schools delivers to you a high school graduation rate of 90%. Of our last four graduating classes at both of these schools, 99% of our graduates are in high school and on track to graduate on time. 17% of them from selective enrollment schools, your selective enrollment schools. One of our schools serves a community of 99% poverty, 20% homeless. Yet, we are delivering to you 99% persistence rate of our alumni through high school.
Mr. Hannan, excuse me, can you please conclude?
From your website, in a letter addressed to parents, you state CPS's goal is to ensure that every student, regardless of what school they go to and what neighborhood they live in, graduates from high school prepared for college and career. If CPS wants a 90% high school graduation rate from an elementary school in neighborhoods where you are currently getting 38 and 47 in a nation that gets 75, Catalyst stands ready to serve you as your ally, as your resource in this important endeavor. But we have to measure it. We have to measure the outcome of high school graduation. And when we get it--
Mr. Hannan--
we have to celebrate it as a success--
Thank you.
not a failure.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 40, Elizabeth Jamison.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Jamison Dunn, and I am the Director of Instruction at Catalyst Circle Rock Charter School. I joined the Catalyst family in 2007 as a founding seventh-grade teacher. One of my fundamental beliefs is that education equals freedom. I grew up right here in Chicago, in the Englewood community, and I know that if it wasn't for education, I would not be where I am today. One thing that I know about Catalyst is that we are preparing change agents, and we are changing students' lives. We currently have 520 scholars enrolled at our school with 289 students on the waitlist. That shows that we are wanted in the Catalyst community and that the Austin community really, really appreciate the things that we're doing. Currently, over 90% of our graduates are in some of the top selective enrollment high schools, charter schools, and private schools across the Chicagoland area. We also both one of only two orchestras at the elementary level in Chicago and possibly one of the largest African-American orchestras in the nation. This year, our theme is leadership, legacy, and literacy. Our leader, Mr. Kay Sang, knows every single scholar by name. Last year, we retained 97% of our staff into this school year, and every single person on our administrative team once served as a teacher at Catalyst Circle Rock. We are committed to excellence, and we're committed to our school. Next is literacy. We have invested a lot of time and money in ensuring that our literacy program is up to par so that we can do well on the NWEA and the Coming Park Assessment. We have used everyone from our instructional aides to our principal to myself to pull small groups of scholars based off their NWEA score so that we can ensure that every single person in our building is getting success that they need.
Ms. Jamison Dunn, can you please conclude?
Sure. Lastly, it's legacy. And what we do every single day contributes to our legacy. Our scholars understand that they are going to be change agents in their community, and we work very hard to make sure that we not only educate students, but we change their lives. Our scholars deserve Catalyst Circle Rock, and I hope that you see that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Linda Capers, followed by Colleen Reardon, Speaker 60.
Good afternoon. My name is Piss Capers. I am an active, involved parent. My children came from a closing school, Pateriski. I fought and fought until the day came when I learned that our school would be closing. A group of parents, along with myself, undecided and did not know where our children would go. Today, we conduct some research, which led us to Catalyst Howlin Charter School. I am fully aware what North Lawndale has to offer for me. Howlin was the best choice. I was amazed what I had learned about the school and was even more impressed during my initial tour of the school and meeting with the principal, the CEO, and other staff. Since enrolling my children, I remain convinced that I made the best choice for my children as well as the other 25 members that enrolled their children at the beginning of the school year. Catalyst Howlin offers a supportive of staff resource at the school program in a state discretion discipline environment where my children can learn. My son, a sixth grader, he is already talking about his high school choice, de la cieo, because Catalyst helps him to think about his future, and he has been challenged in ways that he never has before. The teacher I invest in my children's academic achievement and foster-parent relationship that enhance student achievement. In fact, 99% Howlin and Lurie Maes are in high school and on track to graduate on time. 19% insulated to enrollment school. I think that Catalyst Howlin is a high-performance school in many ways that can be measured, and they care a great deal about their children.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker 60, Colleen Reardon. As she approaches the microphone, the next set of speakers will be Speaker number 38, please, Robert Lamont, followed by Speaker number 41, Wambo Wang, and then Speaker 50, Michael Su, followed by Speaker 48, Tracy Stancio.
Good afternoon. My name is Colleen Reardon. I'm the Dean of the School of Education at Dominican University. I'm here today in my role as board member of the Catalyst Schools and Chair of the Academic Committee of the Board. Other members of the academic committee include Christopher Lilly from Concordia University, Greg Mooney, Executive Director of the Comer Youth Center, Penny Silvers from Dominican, Barbara Kent, a retired CPS teacher, and Lynette Emmons from the National Lewis University. Please know that we bring the full force of resources of our universities and institutions to the Catalyst Schools to impact the lives of children in North Lawndale and Austin communities. I'm grateful to have this opportunity to speak to you. As you have heard, two of the Catalyst Schools have been placed on the warning list. Placement on this list fails to recognize the strength of the academic programs at these schools. While we recognize the need to increase academic attainment level of our scholars, the measures of student growth at both campuses is worth noting. For example, at the Circle Rock campus, student growth, as measured on the NWEA, the test which will be used in the new metric for measuring both student growth and student attainment, Circle Rock scholars outperform 60% of the nation's schools in reading and 66% of the nation's NWEA schools on growth in math. The leadership of the Catalyst Schools recognized the need to focus on increased academic performance of students a year and a half ago. New principals were hired, consultants were secured, and extensive professional development with teachers and leadership teams was undertaken. Catalyst teachers have fully embraced this new approach to reading. The literacy initiative was rolled out in January 2013. Because the ISATS were administered in March of 2013-- Because the ISATS were administered in March of 2013, the impact of the reading initiative was not yet evident. I want to assure you of the continued commitment of the board to the Catalyst Schools. From the CEO and Vice President to the principals and their leadership teams and to the teachers in their schools, the commitment to excellence is realized on a daily basis. I ask today that you reconsider formulating any warning list that would include the Catalyst Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reardon. Our next speaker, then, of Speaker thirty-eight, please, Robert Lamont.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Lamont. I'm from the Veterans for Peace, the Chicago Chapter. I graduated from McKay Elementary and Harper High School in nineteen fifty-four. I'm an old guy. And I had eight semesters of ROTC, final rank of captain. I was a company commander, and I ran the drill platoon. Then I joined the Army, three years in the infantry, where they taught me to use force and violence to attain my goal. I got out, went to Illinois College, got a teacher certificate from the state of Illinois to teach history from grade six through twelve, and I taught at Westinghouse High School from nineteen sixty-eight to ninety-three in the old building. On behalf of the Vets for Peace, I ask that you demilitarize the Chicago Public Schools. Kids need security, the security of loving positiveness, the development of life objectives, training in cognitive skill development, and awareness of occupational opportunities, such programs, and I gave you a folder with these in them, as the Algebra Project created by Bob Moses, the Harlem Children's Zone created by Jeffrey Canada, and the skills necessary for conflict resolution. Kids need nonviolence for life and problem-solving, no bullying. They need not only the skills of analysis, but the skills of synthesis, which was not taught to me in the Army. On behalf of the children and the Vets for Peace, I ask you, and I not only ask you, but I implore you, that you pledge your commitment to demilitarize the Chicago Public Schools. I'm Robert Lamont, Vets for Peace, Chicago Chapter. Thank you very much.